The City of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray. This evening's invocation will be given by Jim Davis, Senior Chaplain of the Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Welcome. Appreciate you coming tonight. After the invocation, please stand, and after that, I will lead in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Shall we pray? Our gracious Heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day here in San Clemente. We pray your blessing upon this meeting, our city leaders, and the folks that are gathered today. We also pray your blessing on all the children going back to school, and the teachers, administrators. We pray your protection upon our deputies and firefighters. We thank you for this wonderful community that we can live in. In your precious name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Doncheck.
Present.
Councilmember Everett.
Here.
Mayor Potem Ham.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
First item on the agenda is a report from Andrew Kansler, Water Conservation Analyst, concerning the city's declaration of a Level One Water Watch.
Hi, councilmembers. So Andrew Kansler here, your Water Conservation Analyst. We're going to go over the recommended drought declaration by staff. So the drought is continuing. I saw you guys about six months ago. We asked for 20 percent voluntary conservation from our residents and talked about what the city is doing to conserve water. So that's continuing. The new thing that's up is, on July 15th, the State Water Resources Control Board called for emergency drought regulations to go into effect on August 1st to last until about January 28th, 2015. Cities and agencies have 30 days to comply, so we're here to comply with that. So San Clemente actually already currently meets the State Water Resources Control Board requirements with the following prohibitions, which is washing down your driveways and sidewalks if potable water is restricted. Can't do that. You've got to use a broom. Causing runoff as a result of irrigation, that's prohibited within our city. Using a hose to wash a car without a shut-off nozzle, so you've got to have an automatic shut-off nozzle or bucket, that's allowed. So can't let your hose just run. Using potable water in a water feature, so you have to have your water recycling. That's the only way you're allowed to have a water feature, which is pretty common. Most people already have that. And irrigation is only allowed between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM. And that's permanent year-round restrictions that we have.
Andrew, I've got a question about that. Would you go back there?
Yeah.
Irrigation between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM. I thought it was better to irrigate at night.
This is what's prohibited. This is a list.
Ah, thank you.
So yes. Okay. So staff is recommending that we enter into a Level One Water Watch alert. What that means is that leaks need to be repaired within 48 hours of being notified. That's down from 72 hours. That's what we normally require. All staff and city employees are going to be notified and directed to actively educate the public and keep an eye out for water waste. The city wants to encourage people to reduce their irrigation in their landscapes. And we also want to encourage residents to use a commercial car wash that recycles its water instead of washing your car on the street or in the driveway. Without additional cutbacks and conservation, the state may require additional restrictions that would be mandatory all across the state, including the city. So we want to get people to conserve water so that we don't have to go with those mandatory cutbacks. San Clemente has three water purveyors, so this is just for San Clemente customers. So check your water bill, see who you're a customer with. You could be a customer of South Coast Water District, which is the northwestern edge town, or Santa Margarita Water District if you live in Talega. So check with them on their local restrictions. Fortunately, we have a Santa Margarita Water District here to talk about theirs. But here's some ways to save water. If you replace your lawn with climate-appropriate plants, you can save 120 gallons per day for 1,000 square feet. So that's a really great way to save water. If you install an irrigation controller that's weather-based, you can save 40 gallons a day. Fixing leaky toilets saves 20 gallons a day. Shortening your showers by five minutes will save 12 gallons a day. So those are some ways to do. And the first two, we actually offer rebates to help you out with those. My contact, this is my contact. Visit ocwatersmart.com for more rebates. Call me if you want some rebate information or if you see water waste. I'm the guy to call. And here's John from Santa Margarita Water District. He'll talk about what the Talega's restrictions are.
Before you step out, I'd want to make a point that you had in your staff report, which I thought was amazing. The last time our city was asked to step up, in 2009, it was a mandatory 12 percent reduction in water use, and our city responded with a 15 percent cutback. So, you know, our city takes this very seriously, and I think that's really important, and it's because of the good work that your staff does in terms of getting the message out on how we can do it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate it. Hey, Jonathan.
Good evening, ma'am. San Clemente Council, thank you. I'm Jonathan Volski, the Public Information Manager for Santa Margarita Water District. And as Andrew said, we service Talega, the second-largest water district in Orange County, and reaching from Cota de Casa, Rancho Santa Margarita, Mission Vallejo, and of course, Talega. We have similar regulations, again, at the behest of the State Water Board. Our board, elected independently of course, has gone just a bit further, and we have a couple of different regulations that are going to affect Talega residents that the remainder of the San Clemente residents won't feel. Our board went to a Stage Two Water Declaration, so we have limits on filling or refilling swimming pools. So we're asking the cities not to issue new permits for construction of swimming pools. And for residents who already have a swimming pool, we're asking them not to refill more than a foot. So we understand there's some times for health and safety that that needs to be changed, but we ask the residents to contact us. And as Andrew mentioned, and Councilwoman Doncheck, residents have been a great partner throughout this, throughout the Santa Margarita Water District. We've seen a 20 percent reduction over the last four years or so. So we know our residents are working hard, and we appreciate that. We've also gone with Talega. We've asked residents to only water three days a week. So we'd ask that residents with even-numbered homes water only on Sundays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays, and those with odd-numbered homes water on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And we'd like that to total about 26 minutes per week, which is more than enough to keep your grass green, and it will, as Andrew pointed out, result in significant water savings. We're doing as much outreach as we can. If there's anybody in the Talega homeowners associations groups, we're reaching out to them. We'll be happy to meet with them. Santa Margarita is also running water reminders and conservation tips on ESPN, Fox, and the Do It Yourself Network on Cox Cable for outreach. When the state announced these regulations, the enforcement of fines up to $500 a day got a lot of the publicity. Most water districts in Orange County, including Santa Margarita, focusing instead on education because we know our residents want to conserve. So we don't expect to be issuing any fines, but we do want our residents and our taxpayers to remember that we're facing $10,000 fines if we don't meet the state mandates. So we're all in this together. Otherwise, as Andrew said, most of our information's the same. I did leave some copies of our ordinance and some sheets explaining the watering schedules on the back, and I believe you have them. This is a great website, and then our website, of course, is www.smwd.com, and all that information's there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate that.
The staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution. So move.
Motion by Doncheck, second by Everett. All those in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0.
And the next item on the agenda is a certificate of recognition to Anthony Alamon.
I was looking for the ballplayer. I was looking too tall, though. That's the problem. Anthony, how are you? Good. I am here to present you with a certificate of recognition for being selected to represent San Clemente. And I'd like you to tell a little bit about the games that you were engaged in recently and what you experienced. And this is very exciting stuff. I love baseball. So, you know, tell us all about your experience out in Florida if you could.
So it started in the tryouts in West Covina at the, I think it's the Big League of Dreams Fields. And there's people that come from Nevada, Arizona, and Utah, and California. And you try out, you get to choose if you want to be a pitcher, or a catcher, or an outfielder, and an infielder. And you can choose your primary position and your secondary position. And they split you up into groups, and then after all that, you do hitting, and then it's over, and then you wait, like, say about half a month, so like, two weeks, and then they have like a selection show. And they go through...
So like the draft?
Yeah. It's like the draft.
Without the contract?
Yeah. And the money. But, and then they go through, like, the players from like 10 all the way to 14U. And so then, when it came to 11U, they went through the whole team, and they didn't have my name. And so I didn't know that I actually made it on the team. And then my dad was like, wait, they showed the kid twice. And then my dad, my dad had like a, kind of like a voicemail, and it, the guy said that I made the team.
How'd you react? Did you start jumping up, hit your father? High fives, running around the neighborhood, you know, take your shirt off, goal, all that good stuff? Well, that's exciting stuff. And so now, what's your primary position? Pitcher?
Um, pitcher.
You're a pitcher, huh? What's your best pitch?
Um, first pitch strike.
Of course it is. See, I never threw, though, so I don't know what that is. Mine was always a first pitch, hit the batter. So that's why they didn't believe me in there for very long. So did you enjoy the experience out in Florida then?
It was awesome.
That's great. Well, I'm excited to present this to you. Let me show you this great certificate here, and it says, "Presented to Anthony Alamon..."
Alamon.
Alamon, okay. "...for being selected to represent San Clemente on the United States Specialty Association Far West All-American 11-U Team at the All-American Games in Orlando, Florida." I have a feeling this is going to be the first of many awards you're going to earn in your life. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. There you go. Good luck.
And we are moving up item 9A on the agenda to this point in the meeting, and that is City Manager Appointment and Employment Agreement.
Yes, I'm pleased to introduce James Makshinov. I think he's going to come on up here. There he is. He's hard to miss. In case you didn't notice on his resume, he did play a little bit of water polo in his day.
But did he play baseball?
You'll have to ask him that. But, yeah. James will be starting tonight, if the council approves the contract that's in front of you tonight. We'll be starting September the 29th. So I think I'll turn it over to the council right now so you can act on the contract if you have any questions.
Yeah, first, James, welcome. Hope the drive down wasn't too bad for you.
The drive was easy this evening. So, thank you. It was a good drive, and I was happy to make it. I'm excited about coming here and hitting the ground running on September 29th. So I've already started running things through my head, taking notes, and thinking about how to start. So just really excited about the opportunity. I thank the council for the opportunity, and Paul, he's been a great resource in working with him, and Eric. So I look forward to meeting the staff, becoming part of the community, and moving forward.
Wonderful. Well, for those members of our community who went through a very exhaustive process, a lot of interviews, and a lot of different folks who are very interested in coming and, you know, leading the city of San Clemente. And I feel, and I'm not alone in this, that we ended up with a great fit, and we are, I'm personally very excited to have you come and join us and be a part of our city and lead us into this, all the changes we have coming up and all the problems we have in the future. So, thank you.
I'm excited. My family's excited. We can't wait to get down here.
I'll second that, Tim. Nice to have you, James.
Thank you.
And it was unanimous, hands down.
Yes. And for this council, that's an impressive accomplishment.
I appreciate that.
Unfortunately, there's only one way I can go from here. We started up here.
We can't wait. Hey, don't worry, he's leaving in a couple of months, so it really is...
So can we make a motion? Okay, I will make the motion that effective September 29th, 2014, we appoint Mr. James Makshinov as the city manager and approve the attached employment agreement in our staff packet.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Doncheck and a second by Councilwoman Baker. All those in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0. Welcome.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, before you go, let me grab you for just two quick minutes. So now I've asked James to come back because I think it's important to know a little bit about maybe some of your ties to San Clemente, just a little bit about who's coming down with you, and some of your background with the city of San Clemente.
I've been coming to San Clemente. I think my dad has said that he could provide a picture of me as a two-year-old in a playpen on the beach down here. That's how long we've been coming here. We've been camping at State Beach for quite some time. My family's actually there right now. It's kind of interesting the way this has all worked out, the timing of it, because Sunday, we started our annual camping trip down at State Beach. The family's there right now. I'm going to swing by there and say hello. I'm actually working this week, but I'll be back down on Thursday for the rest of the week. Been married for 23 years to my wife Suzanne. I have two boys that are 13 and 10, quite active in aquatics and basketball. And, you know, just, they're looking forward to it. Fridays, we spend beach days down here. When I work a 4:10 schedule, so the boys and I come down here all summer on Fridays and spend the day. So I've been working in the public sector for 24 years. I've worked for four cities, Brea, Downey, Covina, and Azusa now. I've been the city manager there for two and a half years. I also worked for the Orange County Fire Authority for a short time, early in my career. And besides that, I played six years on the U.S. National Water Polo Team prior to my full-time career. So looking forward to getting the boys involved in the water polo program here at San Clemente High School, and just really excited about the opportunity to become a part of the community, meeting all of you, and meeting the rest of the staff and everything.
Thank you for that, and welcome again.
Thank you.
Thanks, James. Take care.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the city of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for oral communications, Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes in which to give his or her presentation. I do not have any cards.
All right.
Okay. Could we have a motion, a way of reading, and full of all resolutions and ordinances?
So, second.
A motion by Everett, second by Baker. All those in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0.
Closed session report, city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, the council did take action on one item on the 4:00 PM closed-session agenda that was Item D. The city council authorized the city to enter into a lease for space, city-owned space, Suite 205 on the second floor of the 910 Negocio Building. And I did not write down who made the motion and who seconded it, so perhaps the city clerk could state that for the record. That is required under the Brown Act.
The motion was made by Councilmember Baker, seconded by Councilmember Doncheck, and it carried unanimously.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council, staff, or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and action. I have not received any requests for removal.
Jim? Chris? Bob?
Item D.
Item D. Okay. Lori?
Items H and I, and I'll move the balance unless the mayor's pulling.
I don't have any. Got a motion by Doncheck, second by Everett. All those in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0. Okay. Let's start with Item D. Bob?
Item D talks about legal expenses related to the efforts to talk about the audible warning system. A very opportune time to have a little update on what's going on with the audible warning system down there.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm Bill Cameron, Public Works Director. The, as probably anyone that's walked the beach trail knows, there's been a lot of work going on so that the audible warning system has been constructed. And as the council's aware, there was a lawsuit from the railroad, Burlington Northern, I think it was, that won't allow the use of that audible warning system at this point in time to, in lieu of the train horns. So the city has been working feverishly with residents in the area, plus we have a subcommittee of Mayor Brown and Councilmember Doncheck that have been working with OCTA, the FRA, and other organizations trying to get through this deadlock that we've been at because the federal regulations have made it very difficult for the city to be able to reduce the train noise at various crossings that were part of the trail system. So most recently, we've just filed a waiver with the Federal Railroad Administration, or we are filing one, and working with OCTA on this. And that will be for a waiver looking at three different options, of which they would be redefining the length of the quiet zone, a one-for-one replacement of the wayside horn in lieu of the locomotive horn, or establish a new quiet zone without a public highway crossing, which has been a big impediment to our ability to reduce the locomotive horn noise in this community. Would you, is that enough information?
Well, I'm looking for, I'm looking for next steps. Are there any next ideas? Is there anything coming down the road that we've got some hope that's going to give us some relief on this, Bill?
Right. Well, in fact, that's why this letter has just been prepared for the waiver. We've been working with OCTA, the FRA, and others trying to develop some ideas of what might be acceptable to the FRA, and we have some indications that that might be a possibility, and we're very hopeful that we'll get to a positive conclusion on this. The timing of that, I don't know, since it's out of our hands.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. You'll keep us updated, all right?
Yes, we will.
Thank you. And with that, I'll be happy to move the item.
Motion by Baker, second by Ham. All those in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0. Lori, item eight?
Okay, I have four questions. So, okay, the first one is, this is about the site facility lease agreement on two 80-foot ball field light poles for singular wireless. And my first question is, I was looking at the terms of the lease, and the lease could go potentially 20 years, it looks like. And so my question is, does the language need to somehow reflect the fact that we might replace those light poles? Over 20 years is a long time for sports equipment, and so my question is, are we protected under that eventuality if we end up putting in something that's not 80 feet or doing away because there's some new technology?
With the potential of changing the light pole size?
Right.
The question is, would that impact the existing lease?
Right.
And would they, like, potentially walk away or have issues with that? I believe that there is a term in the lease that allows for that construction in that process. I'm looking at it a little bit more closely, but...
Although my question was specifically, this doesn't, I want assurance that this doesn't tie us into having to have 80-foot poles for 20 years. If there's something else, some technology that came along that was good for the city.
I don't believe it does. I'm just going to look at Tom just to verify.
Tom Radina, Business Services Officer. The poles are actually being replaced by AT&amp;T. These are, you know, stronger poles, if you will. They're reinforced to carry the light stanchions at the top as well as their antenna panels. If we were to change the height of the poles, that would probably cause a termination of the agreement. I'm just assuming if we came in and said we want to lower the antennas by 25 feet, I think they could exercise their rights out of the agreement.
So what you're saying is, in addition to getting the income from this agreement, we're getting new lighting?
Not lighting, just new poles.
New poles.
Just reinforced poles.
Lori, more often than not on these agreements, there is, you know, you're getting a certain amount of income on these sites if there is a change in the policy. These companies are always interested in being there long-term, so usually there's a settlement negotiation where the city says, we need to move it down to 60 feet. Well, you guys pay for the pole, you know, and we'll co-locate on top of those. It meets the structural requirements. But more often than not, unless I'm mistaken, the persons who are initiating that process pays for that. Generally speaking, you look at that as you're getting $36,000 a year for 20 years, you can figure out a way to pay for it if that eventuality does come up. But that would be, I would assume that would be the case in this agreement. If you decided to move the poles down, you would either have to pay for that relocation or come to a settlement.
Okay. And so to that point, I don't want to go on assumptions. I want to make sure that's in here. Is that...
It's not. I don't believe.
Okay.
I was just looking through the...
I don't think it is either, so that was my question.
We can add that provision, but Mayor's correct that typically if we require relocation of the tenants' facilities, we'd have to bear the expense of that.
And the carriers always look at this as 20 years is not very long for them, and so they're interested in 40, 50, 60-year agreements where they can be there for long term. So they'll work with you.
Okay.
But at the same time, they're not going to pay $30,000 because you want to move the pole down 20 feet.
Okay. Well, I'd like some language in there because this is a little different from some of our other installations, which leads me to my second point, which is, I'd like an update on the master plan and how we're doing with that in terms of, since we put together the site facility master plan for the whole city, how we're doing in terms of total revenue and installations. So I'd like to ask for that at some time in the future. And then my bigger issue is, I want to pull from the Planning Commission meeting of August 6th, 2014. It was Item 8A, and it was also a site facility lease agreement between AT&amp;T and, it's at Costa Risco, and it's to do with private open space. So I'd like to have that agendized for the next meeting, Joanne, even though the minutes weren't in here because of, you know, they just didn't get in here. I did watch the meeting, and an action was taken by Planning Commission, so I'd like to have that on our next agenda if possible.
Was that a public hearing item? Do you recall?
It was Item 8. Yes, it was.
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
So yes, it will be on the next meeting?
And Lori, the concern was that it was in private?
Well, there was a lot of concern by citizens.
Over?
Over the ridgeline site view ordinance and the fact that the installations are cluttering up the ridgeline. And so I think it's important for us to look at it. And then buried in the staff report is that this is not one of our designated sites. It's private open space, and so I'm very curious if community benefit is going to be compromised, who the recipient of the income from the project is. So again, it's Item 8A from the August 6th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting, and the site is at Costa Risco, and it's an AT&amp;T project that's going in next to a competitive project.
That item was already appealed by the public, and I believe it's going to be the September 16th meeting that it's scheduled for.
Actually, I could get it on the September 2nd meeting if we advertise in the Register instead of the Sun Post News. They have a shorter...
I think just first out, write a report and give us time to do it at the 16th is more reasonable. If it really, we could do it, but I think it would be, we would be better served to wait till the 16th.
Okay. Can you let the citizens that appeal that know that the city's going forward with this with this so that they don't have to do a redundant effort of noticing and...
So they won't be obligated to submit the fee, since you're going to pull it off?
Okay. That'd be great. And then perhaps my other request in the review of the master plan and where we've got cell towers could be in that report?
Yeah, we can do that.
That'd be great. Okay. Then my last thing is, in doing my fact-finding on this, Mayor Brown, it was brought to my attention that you are on the ACCOG Technology Committee. And if it's appropriate, would you give us an update at the next meeting on what's going on with that committee and if there's any trends that would be relevant to our community?
Absolutely.
That'd be really very good. Okay. All right. So with those four things, I...
Well, may I ask a question about this item? What, what's the ask on, on this San G site? What are you looking for on this?
Oh, I just wanted language in the contract that spells out what the process is if there's a change in the poles.
So if it's a, that would be a relocation clause effectively. So we would, you'd just have to ask for a relocation clause. Yes?
Yes.
We'll add that to the...
We'll work with the city attorney to amend that, to add that to the agreement.
Okay. Great.
And then on the, could I, I'm not sure whether you're going to include this in, in the motion, but on agendizing the, the item from eight A from the Planning Commission meeting?
Yes.
I mean, that would have to be...
A separate motion?
A separate motion, or a, a motion by council, which you can make, but it sounds like it's already been appealed.
I do want to make the motion, though, just so there's no confusion over the fact that it's going to get...
Were you going to get it under council member items, or did you just do it right?
I could just do it right now.
Whatever you prefer.
It, it fits here because I'm talking about the master plan for all of our cell towers.
Just for clarification, Jeff, with that change of adding the relocation clause, would that agreement have to come back to council, or is that change not substantial?
No. No. Well, we'll, I think it's just a, we'll add the words per council direction.
Okay. So my first motion is that we move item six H with the relocation language added to the contract with singular wireless.
Motion by Donchak, second by Everett. All those in favor? Aye. Passes five zero.
And then my second motion is that item eight A, which is the AT&amp;T contract at Costa Risco, be added to the second meeting in September's city council agenda. And included in that staff report will be an update on what's going on with our master plan of cell towers in San Clemente.
I don't think we need to vote on that, do we, or no?
He said we did. So I just made a motion.
Okay.
So I need a second.
Motion by Donchak, second by Hamm. All those in favor? Aye. Passes five zero.
And the Ridgeline hillside development ordinance is also an important part of that, Jim Petches. What you know?
When you're talking about the Ridgeline, are you talking about the cell, cell master plan?
That's a separate issue.
Okay.
Yeah, it's two...
That's on that pick-up aside.
It's separate but related.
All right. Okay. We're good.
No, aye. Okay. Aye is easy. Is Mr. Cameron here? Oh, all right. How are you, Tom? Okay. So this is the city's acceptance and notice of completion for the traffic signal systems upgrade project from Pico, for Avenida Pico and Camino Real. And this is all about traffic light synchronization, which is a wonderful thing. Pardon?
Sorry. There's a live feed right now? What's going on?
Yes, that is a live feed.
A lot. Okay. Sorry.
Okay. Technology, it's a wonderful thing. All right. So...
You're still amazing, I should say.
Get focused. Get focused.
It's a lot.
Okay. So I want to talk a minute about traffic synchronization. And my first question is, did the Orange County Transportation Authority have anything to do with these projects? And if so, what was their financial commitment?
Their, yes, they did, actually. They, they provided grants for this project, and they provided grants in, in the magnitude of eighty-five percent of the original project budget costs.
Fantastic. Okay. I wanted to make sure they got credit for that because I didn't see it in the report. And then the other thing I would just like to share for those of you who may not appreciate the power of synchronization, these kinds of projects can save you thirty percent of your travel time. And they are really good. They take emissions out, pollution out of the air, and they really help with traffic safety as well. So it's a wonderful thing. So I just wanted to make sure everybody appreciates this. Now, were you going to talk about your map?
Yeah. We, we asked Tom to do a little wow show here. So if, if you can spare a couple of minutes, we'd like to do that.
Because we were anticipating the question. Yeah. He spoiled the wow moment, doesn't he?
Well, that, that was a good intro, actually. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Tom Frank. I'm your transportation engineering manager. And this is, or actually about a couple of weeks ago, we had the full birth of our transportation management system. And before you're here tonight, it's a web-based system. And what you're looking at here, and probably most of you have used Google Maps, it's, we have a base map, which is powered by Bing Maps. And it shows the traffic operations along the different corridors. So you see there, going along I-5, we have green conditions. And then, of course, if it goes yellow, that's worse. And then red, of course, is, is bad. So what you see blinking in front of you are the two corridors, which we've recently synchronized. And so this corridor is Avenida Pico, and it's completely synchronized. So when you see the green bulbs there, that's a good thing. That means that the main corridor has the green light. And when you see the red, like along El Camino Real right here, that means the corridor has stopped. But within a short period of time, you'll see that those red lights will turn to green lights. And the value for us engineers and the operations folks is we can greatly improve the time at which we can make changes to these traffic signals. And it also improves the reliability of the system. So that, I'll just click on one to show you a close-up, and it has tremendous reporting capabilities. We can monitor the performance of our system and really optimize the performance of our system. So we have all of Pico synchronized and El Camino Real synchronized. Two that are coming online this summer are Avenida Vista Hermosa and Los Maris. And you can see, those are the black dots right now. Those currently aren't online, but they will be by the summer. And we're also putting in a call for more grant funds to, to hopefully get a project on Camino Veracruz. So eventually, we hope to get all of our signals on this system. Within a year, we should have probably over sixty-five percent of the, the signals on the system. And we'll work to, to get the rest on there within the next few years. Can I answer any other questions?
Yeah, I have one, Tom. How about La Pata? When La Pata's done, are those signals going to be synchronized on La Pata?
They are within our city.
Okay.
So that, that will be interesting. I mean, our, our group of transportation engineers, we find this exciting and useful, as probably most people do their online banking. So it's, we really get a thrill out of this stuff. I know the audience doesn't find it that exciting.
I hate to break it to you, but online banking isn't that exciting. Yeah, I'm with, I'm with Jim on this one. Yeah.
Hey, are you an engineer?
I am.
Yeah, yeah. That, that just showed.
So when La Pata comes online, yeah, we'll be able to synchronize that corridor as well, and we'll be able to monitor traffic. So...
Wes, I mean, we're not going to have to dig, we're not going to have to dig up the streets again or any of that. I mean, it's...
No, we're not.
Going in when it's going in.
Yeah. The, the beauty of the two, or I should say, the two corridors which we completed required the most conduit installation. So we've gone through the brunt of the construction.
Well, we remember what happened to Target. I mean, that was a big...
Yeah.
...fiasco, but anyway, with the synchronization.
We're not going to...
Correct.
We're, we're over that. We're not doing that again.
Right. That's, that's before my time.
Adam.
Right.
Thank you, Bob.
Tom, is, is West Avenida Vista Hermosa going to be included when Hermosa goes through?
It is, correct.
Great.
So I wanted to say thank you. I also wanted to say, your good point about La Pata, maybe we could work with the county and get synchronization all the way, you know, not just to our city border, but all the way up and down, maybe as far as the Ortega. That would be kind of an interesting grant proposal.
Right. I know OCTA is very interested in that. And also, this is really a cutting-edge system, which we have. Orange County, or OCTA staff has already been down several times.
Yes.
And they're showing the system to the county and to other cities throughout the, the county. And, and we're getting a lot of interest. We're getting calls from, from other cities as well.
Yes. You are considered the poster child of how to do this correctly. So congratulations. Yeah.
A poster child.
It's exciting.
You should see the poster.
You're going to be on milk carton next, Tom.
Tom, you can go home and celebrate by doing some online banking.
All right.
Man, not bad, huh? I've been working on that all night. Tom, hold on. Before you go, the future phases for Del Rio to connect to La Pata, is, is that part of that synchronization too? Because you will get a lot of traffic pushing through there.
There will. We're looking at the intersection control along that corridor. So at that intersection, we will have, it will be connected to the system at Del Rio and La Pata. Correct?
Okay. Thank you.
And with that, I'll move the item.
Motion by Donchak, second by Hamm. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Tom.
The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant, not to exceed ten minutes, and public testimony, not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first public hearing is to consider altering the rate and method of apportionment of the special taxes for Marblehead Coastal Community Facilities District Number 2006-1. Staff is recommending that the public hearing for this item be continued to the council meeting of September sixteenth, 2014.
So we have a request for continuance. Do we need to have the public hearing right now and then continue deliberations on the item?
You can ask if anyone's here that can't come on September sixteenth.
Then why don't I go ahead and do that? Is there anyone here that's, that's here to discuss item seven A tonight that can't be here for the continued date, which was the sixteenth of September?
Correct.
Is there anyone here to discuss this item? Seeing that there is nobody, I guess we just make a motion and continue then. Is that correct, Joanne?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we continue this item in the meeting of September sixteenth. Motion by Brown, second by Everett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero.
Next is a public hearing concerning the SB two emergency homeless shelter zone and development standards.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members.
Hi, Amber.
Hi, Amber Gregg, one of three project planners before you tonight. Also on this, oh, I'm sorry. While she brings that up, I'll talk. Also on our team is city planner Jim Petches and Denise Abreu, Community Services Planner. And Jim Hallway is also present in case there's any questions for the Community Development Director. So this item is in regards to state mandate SB two, and this is to continue discussions from our last city council meeting. In tonight's presentation, staff's going to go over what SB two is in case we have any newcomers in the audience on this topic. I'm also going to do a summary over the last meeting, provide information on public zones and city-owned parcels, and finally go over the development standards. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to continue city council's previous discussions and to adopt a resolution and ordinance to comply with the state mandate. So what is SB two? SB two stands for Senate Bill two, and it's a state law that requires cities to designate one or more zones where homeless shelter can be permitted by right. It does not require cities to build, help fund, or provide an emergency shelter. It strictly looks at zoning. So why did the state require this mandate? It's to ensure that all communities provide at least one area where homeless shelters can locate, so not one community is overburdened with a homeless population. Failure to comply with this state mandate can result in legal challenges, noncompliant, incomplete general plan, non-certifiable housing element, or a loss in state housing funds or tax credits. So at our last meeting, the city council reviewed the Planning Commission's recommendation. They also supported the homeless persons estimate count of seventy. And we discussed how communities around us in, in Orange County have addressed SB two requirements and how they've met those. The city council also tentatively supported churches that attend bed limit, and finally directed staff to provide additional information on public zone properties and city-owned properties. So public zone versus city-owned properties, there is a, a difference. Public zone properties are properties that are zoned for public uses, but not necessarily owned by the public. An example of this is our utility companies. They own several parcels in the city that are zoned public, but are owned by them. Public-owned properties are parcels that are owned by the city, but can be located in any zoning designation. An example of this is our animal shelter. That is a city-owned property, but it's actually zoned Rancho San Clemente Industrial. So in regards to public zones, there are a total of fifty-three public zone parcels. Thirteen of those are owned by the Capistrano Unified School District. Four are owned by utility companies, and the remaining thirty-six are owned by the Cini. Here we have a breakdown of those thirty-six parcels. Twelve are parking lots. Thirteen are public utility locations. Four are parts of community buildings, four open space remnant parcels, and there are three vacant properties that had reservoirs on them. So this is a map of public zone properties, including all the uses on there. Included in this map are the Capistrano Unified School District properties. However, at the last meeting, city council did not want to include those properties on there. So staff did eliminate those. So this map here shows the public zone properties minus the Capistrano Unified School District properties. At the last meeting, there was some discussion about our building here, City Hall, the Civic Center. And there was a thought that that was zoned public. It is not zoned public. It is a type of public zone, but it's actually zoned Civic Center. It is the only parcel in the entire city with that designation. And if city council decided to include that, that's perfectly acceptable and is how the staff report is written. So public-owned properties. A majority of these types of properties that the city owns are, are zoned open space or are remnant parcels. There are actually five parcels that are zoned either commercial, business park, or industrial, and are at least five hundred feet from residential zones. Those five parcels are the community development offices on Negocio, the old fire station that FAM currently occupies, the Costa Animal Shelter. There's a vacant lot located adjacent to the, or next to the animal shelter. And then there's a piece of property at the corner of La Pata Vista Hermosa that's currently vacant. So here we have a map of public-owned properties. You can tell that a majority of this map is green. That's because most of those are open space or parks or golf courses. And then you can see the other colors for utilities, civic centers, parking lots. I apologize, this is, it's kind of hard to fit a whole city onto one map and show everything. So based on public uses, there are really two alternatives that city council can consider. The first is to just include the public zones in the emergency shelter overlay. This would permit, permit emergency shelters on public and civic center's own parcels, and that would total forty-one parcels. Again, that would be without Capistrano Unified School District properties. Or you can do public zoned and city-owned parcels, and that would permit shelters on public and the civic center's own property, as well as city-owned parcels in commercial, business park, or industrial zoning districts that are at least five hundred feet from residential properties. And that's a total of forty-six parcels. So based on our last meeting, staff believes that recommendation, alternative number two, would be the recommended action. And again, public and civic center's own parcels and city-owned properties at least five hundred feet meeting that category. So this is what the proposed emergency shelter overlay looks like on a map. Includes the City Hall building and the city-owned properties that I previously stated, along with the public zones. So finally, the development standards. A brief summary of those development standards include, but are not limited to, the requirement of a conditional use permit once the emergency's homeless shelter needs have been met. In this case, that would be seventy currently. A maximum of thirty-five beds per facility. The reason why it says thirty-five beds per facility in the staff report is staff wanted to ensure that there was city council consensus based on our previous discussion of having twenty beds located in there. And if that needs to be reduced to twenty, we can do that in the ordinance.
Reduce it. There was consensus, and it happens at hour four and thirty-eight minutes in the tape. So there was consensus for twenty beds.
And ten beds for churches. It also goes over maximum length of stay, supervision requirements, and the management plan. So that concludes staff's presentation, and staff's available to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions? Chris?
Yeah, I got a question.
Go ahead. Do you want to?
I just wanted to clarify that we all went three hundred and twenty.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you go back through the slides to the final map that shows the forty-one parcels? Can I just see, there you go. Any clarification on, those are all the parcels not within five hundred feet of residential zone?
No, that is incorrect.
Okay. Because when I read here, number two, public zone properties plus city-owned properties, which is the staff recommendation, the last part of that says, and located at least five hundred feet from residential zones.
That is strictly addressing city-owned properties that are five hundred feet from residential zones.
Okay. So then in that circumstance, is this property within five hundred feet of residential zones?
This property is within five hundred feet. That's correct.
So then why is it included? I think I'm missing something.
Because it's not, it's a civic designation. It's not a city-owned, it's a commercial property. Is that correct, Amber?
Yes, that's correct.
So because it's not within a commercial zone?
That's correct. It's a civic center's zone property, which in your staff report goes over the fact that it's the only parcel that's with that zoning designation and does fall under a type of public zone. But we needed to specifically call that out if that zone wanted to be included in, in your request.
Uh, real quickly, just give me an example of a city-owned property that's within five hundred feet that's not included on the, on the list.
Of a commercial property? Is that what you would like?
Yeah.
So we have a remnant piece of property at Calvia State Beach.
Okay.
That is a commercial zone property, and that is located within five hundred feet of a residence.
Okay.
Residential zone.
Okay. Thanks.
I just want to build on that question, because I had the same question. I just want to build on that question, because I had the same question you had Councilmember him. If we were to take this parcel out because of the 500—the idea being that the 500-foot distance kind of trumps any zoning, would that change staff's feeling about the recommendation?
It would just be one less parcel.
One less parcel, okay.
Amber, where'd the 500 feet come from?
That 500 feet came out of a request of Planning Commission.
So there's nothing in SB 2 that says 500 feet? There's nothing—that was a Planning Commission recommendation that we not do this within 500 feet?
That's correct.
Of residential areas?
That's correct.
Okay.
And just to reiterate, this isn't exactly the same, but there are a series of other cities that have used public institutional and other types of variations on this within Orange County. Is that correct?
That's correct. There are a total of four other cities that have used this, the two closest being Dana Point and San Juan Capistrano.
Okay.
I just had one point of clarification. On page 7B in the staff report, you say there are 21 churches, and then when you go back and look at the zoning ordinance, it's actually churches and other religious institutions. So is the 21 comprehensive? Does it include synagogues and—
It does.
—all forms of faith-based institutions?
That's correct.
Equals 21?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Amber? Okay, thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
Why don't we open the public hearing? Actually, it's already open. Is that right? We've continued it?
This is a new public hearing.
This is a new public hearing, so I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. For the folks that are in attendance, if you would like to speak on this item, there are the blue speaker cards in the back. Fill one out regarding this and come up and submit it to Joanne and Laura, and we can happily hear your opinion on this item.
Can I just clarify what the city clerk said? Yes, this is a new public hearing. It's newly noticed, but the previous hearing is part of the record that's before the council for consideration. So all of the comments that made by members of the public, staff, council, that's all part of—
Previously, it's still part of this record for this hearing.
This record, yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. First, we'll hear from Dale Patterson. Following Dale is Thomas Mariello.
Hi, I'm Dale Patterson. I've lived in the city about 30 years. What I wanted to bring up and point out, and it may even be invalid. Now, is the business park at Cali Negocio still a possibility for the homeless shelter?
We can ask—I'll say—we'll answer your questions when we do our deliberation. You can ask—if you'd like to just say you'd like to get answered.
I assume that that is still a possibility, and I just kind of wanted to point out why that's probably not a good idea. The homeless people—and I have as much sympathy for them as anyone else—but during the day, they are going to travel down Pico to the freeway off ramps and the brand-new outlet mall, and they're going to panhandle and do what they can do. Now, that's going to happen no matter where they are. The problem with coming down Pico is they're going to walk—all those people twice a day are going to walk right by the front of our high school, where every young person of that age is housed in that facility. So twice a day, we're inviting these people, and I'm not saying they're bad people, but you know, you can't say they're all good people either. What we can agree on is that they might be a little more desperate than some people, you know, and I have sympathy for them. But we're asking them twice a day to walk right by the front of our high school where we're supposed to protect our children. Now, we all know that things happen at high schools, not necessarily by the homeless, but things do happen in high schools. So twice a day, we're asking—we're inviting—we're almost forcing them to walk right by the front of our high school two times a day. There is not even a sidewalk on the other side of Pico. So for that reason—and I wanted to plant that in everybody's mind—I don't think it's a good idea. We don't want to end up on Channel 9 News. Again, nothing against the homeless, but if it does happen, we're all going to go, "Well, it's not our fault. The state mandated it, so it's their fault," or I go, "Well, the city council put it through, so this happened." And I just felt that—in order for me not to throw my hands and say it's not my fault, I had to get up here and at least point this out, that this is what we're doing. We're taking these people twice a day in front of our high school, not behind the high school, not the side of the high school, the main gate where they go in and out. Every one of our young people and every one of whatever homeless people are there are going to be going by there every single day. So I just wanted to—you know, when we make a decision on this, plant that seed. That's what's going to happen. That's reality. So that's what I got.
Thank you, Dale. Next is Thomas Mariello. Calling Thomas is Jack Culp.
That's good evening, council members. I represent the Rancho San Clemente Business Park Association, and we wanted to speak out in support of the staff recommendation tonight. We think it achieves legal compliance with SB 2. It does so in a practical way. It does so in a way that respects the competing interests of the community, the taxpayers, the business owners, the residents, and maybe it will allow us to build on this issue going into the future. This is an opportunity for a lot of us for an introduction to the problems of the homeless in San Clemente. I also want to thank staff for their work on this project. It's been a long road, and so thank you. We do support the recommendation with the clarification of 20 beds per site for the public and public zone and city-owned sites. Thank you.
Next is Jack Culp. Following Jack is Barbara Scheinman.
Good evening, members of the council. I've been excited about what I hear has been developing and the decisions that you are about to make tonight. I want to thank you for your openness and listening to the pleas of the business park. My name is Jack Culp, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Rancho San Clemente Business Park. And one of the things that one of the council members pointed out in a recent email I got was that La Pata is going to be punched through to San—through the hills into San Clemente. When that occurs, it's going to give a great opportunity for a lot more possible employees as well as easy access from San Juan and from other communities on the east side of the mountains, on the north side of the mountains there, to have access to the business park. And I think it's—I think coming through with La Pata is going to change the complexion and the availability and the accessibility of the business park. And that gem on the hill is a real gem. We're proud of it. We all work hard to maintain it, and we want to make sure that we do our very, very best to protect that community, that business park, and all of the employees and peoples and businesses that are in there. And we appreciate the council's good consideration, and I think the idea that they should use perhaps some of the public property, the city-owned property, as a consideration for homeless shelter. We appreciate it. We thank all of you for your effort, and thank you for whatever decision you're going to come up with tonight. Thank you.
Next is Barbara Scheinman. Following Barbara Scheinman is Ed Connor.
Thank you, city council members. But with all due respect, you are not really listening to your constituents. I've been here through all the Planning Commission and city council meetings addressing SB 2. We have all heard many people speak with seemingly different views about a shelter in San Clemente, but actually, everyone who spoke has said the same thing. No one wants homeless people on our streets, near our children's schools, parks to play areas. No one wants homeless people in our canyons, starting fires and polluting our green areas. No one wants homeless people near our places of business, tourists, customers, clients. We have all said this in our speeches. Most speakers have said where they don't want a shelter to be. Other speakers have made suggestions where a shelter could be, but everyone wants the homeless off the streets and out of our canyons. On this, we all agree. Have you really been listening to this? If you put forth a response to SB 2 that is not viable, you are not listening to your citizens. You are playing a game with the state and leaving the concerns and complaints of your citizens completely unresolved. This is not about just getting away with SB 2. You have proposed using the San Clemente churches as shelters, but again, you're not listening to your constituents. The churches have all either openly stated they cannot act as shelters, or they are withdrawn from the issue entirely, which reflects that they are not willing to be a part of this discussion at all. The churches are not a viable response to SB 2. You are not listening to the churches. You are not listening to your citizens. The experts in your city have told you that to get the homeless off the streets, there needs to be one location for the homeless to go to. One place so they know where there will be beds. One place so services such as meals and showers can be arranged. One place so resources such as counseling and job training can be organized. If there is more than one location, the homeless will still be wandering city streets looking for open beds, and services will not be able to be offered, and therefore, nothing will change. You are not listening to your experts. I have been listening to the speakers here, and at the last meeting, I was appalled to hear some members of the city berate and attack the one organization who has tried to get the homeless off the streets of San Clemente. In my 20 years as your hospital's social worker, it has only been since IHOP came to the city that our homeless have received help to get off the street, be reconnected with families out of the area, and got mental health and substance abuse assistance to change their situations. There are other local organizations that do help the homeless, but none get the homeless off the street like IHOP does. How shameful for those who are doing nothing to attack those who are doing something. If you're not going to be part of this solution, then don't attract those who are trying to be. In a few months, San Clemente's hospital is closing. The hospital the city has been using as its shelter will be gone. And what shelter are you allowing in its place to keep the homeless off your streets and out of your canyons, as your citizens have asked for at all these meetings? From what I am hearing, listening to the city council, none. I am listening to the people of San Clemente. Are you?
Ed Connor is next. Following Ed Connor is Leslie Davis.
Good evening, council members. I'm Ed Connor. I represent the newly-formed organization by the name of the Emergency Shelter Coalition. Yesterday morning, on behalf of the Emergency Shelter Coalition, we filed this letter. I think some of you may have received copies. I'm not sure you received the full copy. Yesterday afternoon, at my request, letters were submitted, joining in that letter by the ACLU, the Candy Commission, and the Public Law Center. They're not doing this for fun. They're very serious about what you're doing here tonight, and they're watching. Yesterday afternoon also—I believe Leslie Davis will talk to you more about that—a group by the name of the San Clemente Collaborative submitted a letter telling you about the results of their survey of churches, pointing out that the vast majority of the churches for which you gratuitously volunteered to serve as your shelters and shift your responsibility to them have said, "No, thank you." That's the evidence now on the record. The evidence also on the record is that you are trying to designate tonight water towers as shelters, your library, your cultural center, Old Hanson Beach Club, a swimming pool, and other city-owned properties that are completely infeasible, unworkable, and completely unavailable because you haven't declared any of them surplus properties. What you are doing, proposing to do, is illusory and deceptive. It makes a mockery of SB 2 that will not be lost in the people in Sacramento, and it will not be lost in court. Now, let me change my tone. Would you just dream with me for a second? What if a dream were to come true that you all helped make possible, and that is a successful emergency shelter where the churches volunteered, where high school students volunteered their time to get their service hours, where the local businesses actually contributed and donated to the success of that shelter, and everybody won, and everybody felt great about it, and it was a success? Would you not want that to be part of your legacy? If you put in a great sports park, what about putting in a great homeless shelter? That will only happen if you work with groups like us. Sit down, we pick a site, and all this litigation gets to go away. We actually agree there's a site, and we can do this, and we can make it happen, and you can be the people who did it. You make the dream come true. You have the power to do it. It's easy to do. I ask you to join us in doing it. I really do ask you sincerely to do it. Thank you.
Next is Leslie Davis. Following Leslie is Sandra Weaver.
Good evening, member council members, and Mayor Tim Brown. Yes, the San Clemente Collaborative has conducted a survey of churches and religious entities in San Clemente. There was 21 that we surveyed. Nineteen of them have permanent sites. I believe you've already read the letter, but basically, the question we posed was, "Would your church or religious center be able to house up to 10 homeless individuals on a regular basis?" Well, 19 of those sites—of those 19 sites, 15 responded, "No." One, "Maybe," and three did not respond. The consensus derived from the survey is that while all the religious entities want to help the homeless, and they want to provide assistance in the form of a shelter, only one could possibly provide a small homeless shelter. All of these churches would like to see the city council identify some additional feasible sites. And I have reviewed the staff report, and I've noticed that, you know, it looks like there's only two sites you're talking about that would be—that are vacant right now, and you're saying only 20 people could be on those sites. So how does that really add up? Two sites of 20 people, one church of 10 who maybe could do it? I just don't see how what you're recommending is feasible. Lastly, these three sites of 20 people are really not economically feasible. It weakens and complicates the provision of services and the collaboration of churches. So got some questions for you. Thank you.
Following Sandra Weaver is Kathy Dominici. Sorry.
Good evening, council members. My name is Sandra Weaver. I am a resident of San Clemente, and I try to work very closely with IHOP in solving our homeless problem. I was at the meeting last month, and I commend you all for trying to do your best, but you blew it. After the meeting, I sent you all an email explaining why I felt that way, and a copy to the both papers. And if you didn't see it, it's in both papers. But what you tried to do last month was appease everybody and not hurt anybody's feelings. You had two sites. You had people here opposed to both, and if you chose one over the other, then you'd get flagged by, "Oh, they like us better. They don't like us enough." And so you looked at the church option, and I have to admit, I don't know about the city-owned properties. I was hoping to hear about that tonight. I thought that was going to be presented tonight, and maybe I'm too late for it. At any rate, the people in the Planning Commission and the collaborative committee worked diligently and hard and tried to come up with a solution that was workable and workable for everyone. And unfortunately, anywhere you put a homeless shelter next to someone, they're going to oppose it. It's too bad, but that is the way it is. I really think that you need to rethink this whole thing. If those two sites that were shown to be ideal and shown to be the best solution for the homeless and for those neighbors surrounding it don't work for you, then it's back to the drawing board. But we need a homeless shelter here that can provide more than just a bed to sleep on. It can provide counseling. It can get people off the street and into a more productive life. The churches are always willing to help. They'll help by counseling. They'll help by referring them to IHOP. They'll help by giving them food or perhaps even money, but they can't be expected to provide a homeless shelter the way that San Clemente needs one. I was here to hear the last two speakers, and I'm thrilled, and I agree with everything they said, and I urge you to think strongly about this issue. This is not the right direction. Thank you.
Kathy?
Hi, I'm Kathy Dominicini.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. You're the first person who's ever done that. I'm a resident of San Clemente, and I want to say that I agree with what Barbara Scheinman has mentioned in her speech to you, and I'm asking this council to really evaluate what you're being charged with here. The SB 2—I feel frightened that my city's council is trying to get away with barely kind of a slimy way of fulfilling SB 2. And I'm not proud of it. It's a challenge. I—you know, I've been involved in this process the whole way through. I, you know, I've been involved in this process the whole way through, and I understand it's a touchy subject. But I saw what Dana Point did, and I saw what San Juan Capistrano did, and if you would ask, they've never utilized those services. I don't think anybody's ever provided services for any homeless in any capacity, because the constraints, they're so constrained, the qualifications are so tight. And I am glad to hear that, I mean, not glad to hear, I'm glad to hear my question was answered about how many churches would be able to accommodate up to 10 people. And as you see, that's really not a viable option for us to provide an area where homeless people can go and get services and have the safety of being in a shelter. I ask that you take more time on this and really find an answer that will be something you are proud of, that our city can be proud of, and when the time comes that we need to put a shelter together, that we will have thought this out well, and that we can stand proud. I don't want to say, "Oh, we have an SB2 zoning." That's like Dana Point or San Juan. It's an embarrassment, that type of zoning. So that, that's one thing. Have to read my notes here. And I too had questions about the city public-owned properties, or I guess it would be that were viable. And it sounds like Leslie addressed that, because I can't imagine some of the places that are listed would be viable. They're not. You have to have a very specific type of structure, you know, building, setting, in order to do this. So it is challenging. We do have, you know, we have constraints. Our town is pretty much built out, but I do believe that if we take the time, we can identify an area that would provide this service for those individuals. Thank you very much.
Next is Richard Metcalf. Following Richard is Nem Pet. Following Nem Pet is Justin McCarthy.
Good evening, once again. I'm Richard Metcalf, I'm resident of San Clemente for 12 years now. Several things occurred to me listening to this evening's proceedings. Number one, I have a sense that the planning staff has sold, or attempted to sell, the council a bill of goods. We talked about having a common site. There is a common site with sufficient room at the City Reclamation Yard that could be set aside for this. And yes, the planning staff came up with, I should say, perhaps created or fabricated some reasons why that wouldn't work. And what's the difference between now, if we move to the San Clemente Business Park, if you have some city properties within the business park, or if you lease a property to somebody for a homeless shelter in the business park? There's no difference. The same thing. Our eloquent barrister has spoken very well, but he has a dog in the fight: money. That needs to be acknowledged. Now, I agree with what Ms. Scheiman has said. We do need to deal with something, but we do have some facilities within the city's purview where we could do something and get the people that want to step up to the plate with money and time to contribute to put something together. The other thing is, I'm tired of hearing about protecting the homeless. We don't have any idea what the criminal records are of homeless people, what the psychiatric records are of homeless people that are running around on the streets. I'm not saying everybody has these problems, but there's certainly a substantial number of Jerry's kids that have been kicked out of the big house to fend on their own, convicted felons, and they're out in this area. We need to look at that in terms of protecting the community, the tax-paying, bill-paying citizens of this community that make it tick. Think about that, council, please.
Okay. Nem Pet is next. Following Nem Pet is Justin McCarthy.
Thank you. It's me again, and public safety, of course, is really the anchor of, I hope, the freedom of the United States that many of us who were not born here came here to seek. And it's not fear. As I mentioned the last time, I've dealt with a lot of international community development, both in public health, mental health, and a gentleman last time who was here indicated about the mental health issue. He's been running the issues. We know that the state of California, after the third community say no to sexual predators, that's when they're classified as legally homeless. I'm not talking about the homeless who are residents of this area. I'm talking about the Big Railroad of homeless. And trust me, I want to talk about, you know, I've been in compassion business internationally, but compassion industrial complex in this country is very different, and we see that, I don't want to go really bizarre, but if you have a lot of international homeless people that, you know, we can substitute, you know, for what's really, I mean, this is like homeless in paradise. I'm sorry to say this. I don't want to belittle, but the reality is, there are tons of Asian homeless that we have hundreds and thousands and millions that are ready to basically be housed in, quote-unquote, "California coastal style." It's not a problem at all. And so, basically, I just want you to reconsider that what I'm saying, it sounds very bizarre, but my point is, please, please, it's not limbi, it's not in my backyard. It is a reality. The coastal trail, the ridge trail, the sports park. I have friends here who just invested in two industrial parks, Rancho San Clemente properties, and it's not that. There's going to be more properties she's investing, because she's got to move her family, and it's a business for life, not business for death. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for letting me say a few items. This is probably one of the most difficult and intractable problems the city council gets to address. There is no good location. I think everybody knows that. This is probably the best of a bad option, but we're compelled by the state to do something. I think the record needs to reflect, not for your benefit, but in response to a few of the other speakers, while the homeless may not be bad, that doesn't mean that some of them are not dangerous. You have dual diagnosis, substance abuse, mental health problems, you know, socialization problems. I have dealt with homeless shelters in other jurisdictions. I've had them accost the residents of my community. I've had them do bad things. I witnessed and attempted, appeared to be sexual assault, right in Civic Center Park in Long Beach, observing it from the third floor of my offices. And unfortunately, there's a lot of bad things that occur in that community, and there are bad actors that do travel within that community. If we have to concentrate one in a large facility somewhere, I hope that doesn't have to happen, but if we do, it looks like your planning commission was close to half-right. I'll just leave that on the table. You know, please monitor this situation closely. Do we have adequate public safety? I believe we have had at least one assault, at least anecdotally, that I heard about at the high school, whether that was an assault or just kind of a negative interaction between a homeless person and a student, but that was reported to me, and the person seemed to be very credible. Also aware that landscapers have been threatened at knife point by some of our homeless. So let's be very clear here. We're dealing with a very problematic community. Thank you very much.
Next is David Brant. Following David is Noemi Steinblock? Steenblock, excuse me.
I'd like to thank the council for allowing us to make our presentations tonight. This is quite an important issue for so many of us, and we appreciate your willingness to let us speak. I am very happy to endorse the proposals made at the July 15 council meeting. To be specific, the sharing of the sheltering of the 70 homeless individuals we are responsible for between the 21 churches in San Clemente and on public property, appropriate public property, that is. This proposal has been used by Dana Point and San Juan Capistrano, and has been approved by the state of California. I would like to endorse this proposal enthusiastically. Thank you, and thank the staff for the fine work you've done on this issue. It's extremely difficult, and speaking for a resident of Rancho San Clemente, we appreciate everything you all have done. Thank you.
Next is Noemi. Following Noemi is Denise Tuttle.
Good evening. My name is Noemi Steenblock. I've been a resident in San Clemente for 31 years, and I thought San Clemente was a paradise. I came to San Clemente to raise my children, not knowing what's under what we see. And I'm going to call, I'm going to talk from my heart tonight. My children are adults now. My youngest daughter suffers from depression, and she became an addict, and she became a homeless. A depression is a disease. And the other day on the radio, they mentioned, "If you, sir, like your gentleman, had a heart attack right now, we will rush you to the hospital to do surgery to fix your problem." But people who suffer from depression, we say, "Oh, get over it and get going with life." But as science progresses, we're learning that depression is a disease, and a lot of these homeless people, if you go talk to them, they're not just nobody. Some of them are engineers, some are lawyers, some are, something had happened in their life, or they suffered from depression. As all you know, this week, Robin Williams committed suicide, who was one of my most favorite people. I came to this country in 1970 with a big dream. America was my dream, and Robin Williams showed Mork and Mindy, and I fell in love with that man, and I had no idea that he suffered from depression. And two days, my husband said, "It's so sad that inside he was so sad, and outside he made us all laugh." So it's not, the problem is not building shelters. The problem is doing research, putting money into research to understand mental disease. And when Reagan came to power, you know what he did? He dismantled all the mental institutions, and a lot of these homeless people from Vietnam War and other wars, they are on the streets because of that. We're sending our young men to Iraq. We have no business going to Iraq, and all that money we're putting into war, it can go towards research about finding resolution to depression. And if we find a resolution to depression, we wouldn't need the shelters.
Next is Denise Tuttle.
Tuttle.
Tuttle, excuse me. And following Denise is Nancy McIntyre. Pardon me.
Okay, no problem. Thank you for letting me speak. I just want to say that I noticed the difference between the number of people who are here to in tonight's meeting in comparison to the meeting last month. I do believe the reason for that, especially the people who were opposed to the homeless shelter going in the Rancho San Clemente Business Park, those people felt that a decision had been made to not consider that as an option any longer. And I think tonight, we are hearing that the possibility of that being back on the table is a real thought. Okay. I just think that the people, that the reason why there are not so many people here to speak tonight is because a lot of people felt in their hearts and in their minds that they were, it was okay, that some other idea had been put forth that was viable. And I think the majority of the people who felt that the option was viable are not here tonight, and that's the reason why there seems to be a stronger component of people who want to have it reinstated into the business park. And that's all I have to say. Okay? Thank you.
Next is Nancy McIntyre.
Good evening, Mayor Brown, council members, city staff, and my fellow San Clemente citizens. My name is Nancy McIntyre, and I have been a resident of San Clemente for over 39 years. I'd like to just remind you as council members that you have a big, not to remind you, you already know that, you have a big decision to make tonight. But it's not so much to decide a zoning and ordinance that meets the letter of the law, but also the spirit of the law. And I'd like to remind folks that the decisions, the zoning decisions made in San Clemente, Laguna Niguel, Mission Viejo, have resulted in not one homeless shelter. So what we, I think we're better than that. And Laguna Beach has a homeless shelter. They have found over the three years that the alternative sleeping location has been open, that it has not attracted an influx of homeless into Laguna Beach. In fact, they are able, once they get people off the street, they're able to work with them, get them their medications, so they're less likely to be a danger, to actually give them services, so that many of them, who, as the former speaker said, the last speaker said, through difficulties like medical emergencies or losing a job, have nowhere to turn, but now they have options. I think the combination of a viable homeless, of a good quality homeless shelter, and your ordinance certainly would require that, and sufficient day services so that we don't just bus people back out into the city, we actually provide day services for them so they can get the training and medication and services they need. If we have a combination of those two things, then we have, we have fulfilled the spirit of the law. I think it's really important to understand that we, as a city, need to look at what is right for all of our people, and I thank you very much for listening to me.
Any more blue cards on this item?
No.
Okay. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Amber, there were just a few questions that came up from different residents that I'd like to just run by you. Dale Patterson asked, "Is the business park still a possibility?" I would assume that everywhere in San Clemente is always a possibility under these deliberations, but for the purpose of this meeting, we had notified under the staff recommendation, and that's why it is that we're having this meeting. Is that an accurate take?
We actually notified all the previous study side areas, including the public zones.
Okay. Excellent. The second item was that, you know, part of, one of the questions that came up is, you know, addressing vacancies, you know, what properties are vacant, what's available. Is that part of the question in SB2? Is that something about, you know, when you designate a zone, do you have to establish whether or not there's vacancies or possibilities? How is that a factor, or is that a factor?
It is a factor. You do have to prove that there is some sort of reasonable availability in order to establish a shelter within a planning period.
Also, one of the questions that folks brought up was, you know, you've got cities who've done this same type of ordinance, but shelters haven't been developed. You know, and just to clarify for everyone here, SB2 and its strict requirements isn't addressing the question of building a homeless shelter. Could you just clarify everyone exactly what the parameters of the SB2 ordinance are, and does it deliberate the construction and operation of a homeless shelter?
It does not deliberate the construction and operation of a homeless shelter. It is strictly to identify a zone, or in this case, an overlay, where a homeless shelter could be established by right.
By right. And does it say who that organization needs to be?
No, it does not.
Doesn't? It's completely silent on that fact.
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have two, and this is in the category of, it's important to have correct information out there. One of the speakers said that the hospital was closing. Do we have any knowledge that our hospital is closing in six months?
I do not. I would defer to...
No, I don't think, I don't think that is a fact, so...
There is a, there's, I can clarify what's been in the press. There has been a proposed plan to change it to an ambular... There has been a proposed plan to change it to an ambulatory care facility and would take a remodel, so it would for a period of time have only urgent care.
There is a plan as opposed to the statement that was made that it was closing. It is not closing.
There is nothing definitive.
About closing it?
Part of that yet, but that is, that is what has been in the public news.
Oh, yes, I guess we do have somebody there. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
I got, I got a couple of questions. Somebody said that the homeless shelter in Laguna Beach has not attracted any out-of-town homeless folks. Do you have any information on that?
I would defer to Denise Sabrero who has information on that. Laguna Beach Shelter.
Yeah.
Hi Denise Sabrero, excuse me. The alternative location in Laguna Beach, because of the lawsuit, the ACLU lawsuit, they have a local preference. And our attorney can speak more about that, but because of that nuance, they can go ahead and only shelter Laguna Beach residents. So overall, across the board, the numbers haven't, you know, there's always a transient population, of course, but across the board, they have not attracted more homeless over the last three years. We have statistics and we have the executive director who gave us all of that information at the commission meeting.
So the local preference option for Laguna Beach is not an outgrowth of the fact that they've attracted people from other areas?
No, within the homeless community, all of the homeless know that if someone comes from out of the area, they will not be given shelter. Shelter will not be provided because of the homeless, because of the local preference.
And local preference, is that a, are there any lawsuits over local preference? Has that been spoken about? Heather Jeff?
I think I read something about that.
No?
No.
Okay.
Also Denise, to clarify, that wasn't from SB 2. Their shelter had to do with a separate and independent activity. It was not an outgrowth of compliance or not with SB 2.
Correct.
Right, but I was questioning the, has it attracted folks from out of town?
Denise, if I could.
The, no, for Amber now. Amber, we, we talked about, there has to be openings and a viable option. Is open spa, I don't want to use the term open space, is open land an option where some entity could come and build their own building?
On the vacant land, pieces of property within SB 2 or within the emergency shelter overlay, and there are a couple.
Okay. One more question for you. People talk about how San Clemente hasn't done much for homeless. I heard that countless times tonight. I'm not sure that's correct. Could you talk to us about some of the things that San Clemente, the city, San Clemente and the citizens of San Clemente have done for homeless folks in town?
That'll alter back over to Denise Sabrero, who's our community service programs coordinator.
Thank you.
So we have a number of local organizations in town, obviously the Family Assistance Ministries. They provide services, more of a preventative, homeless prevention type of social services to families and our residents. They see around approximately 2,600 residents per month in the Rancho San Clemente Business Park. We do have a number of transitional housing shelters in town. They're located in the Vista Los Madres neighborhood. One is owned by the Friendship Shelter and the other one is owned by Gilchrist House, Family Assistance Ministries, as well as Laura's House, which is the, which is the only domestic violence emergency shelter and transitional shelter in Orange County.
Can you talk about workforce housing and low-income housing as well?
And then we have a number of wonderful, in the pipeline, affordable housing projects. We have the Workforce Housing Project, which is a downtown housing project. And then we also have the Senior Housing Project in the south end of town, as well as Jamburi Family Housing in Tuleka.
So the characterization that San Clemente hasn't done anything for the homeless population, would you agree with that or disagree with that?
I would disagree. I think that overall compared to other cities, especially in South Orange County, we are doing a good job in terms of that specific population.
Thank you.
Thanks Denise. Jim, Chris, any questions for Amber? You know, there, there were a few points that, that did come up that I did want to address on point. Denise actually picked it up. When I was, right after the 2010 election, I was asked to appear on a panel regarding housing, low-income housing and some of the transitional housing needs. And they only invited two cities in Orange County and San Clemente, one of those. And I told them, I said, I don't know anything about transitional housing, so I had to talk to Denise and I had to talk with a few people about it to come up to speed. And one of the things that came out was, is how progressive San Clemente has been for years on these items. And, you know, no, nothing that I contributed to that whole conversation. I'm learning about it as it's going, but I was impressed by the reputation we had. It's hard for me, I think, when people characterize our efforts as slimy, because I don't think that there's a, at this point, I don't know if there's a partner that's been more reliable in support of these efforts than the city of San Clemente. Maybe I've missed something. Maybe there's some other body out there that's, you know, working hard, not only to help people in a transition nature, but also, and one of the most important things is keeping people from being homeless through economic development, through economic activity, through having jobs, stable neighborhoods. That is a very important activity that we're completely glossing on in this whole conversation. There is a chronic homelessness problem and I will not at all diminish how difficult that is. But there's also a very important subset of folks who require employment and gainful living to have a roof over their heads. I, you know, at times in, in my life, I have not only had firsthand experience with that, but interact with folks who did. And sometimes just having a job at the end of the day to be able to sustain you and give you a little pride and something to do is, is the difference between ending up in a shelter or, or having a place that you can go home to. So let's not, let's not diminish, you know, that there's a wider effort in play here and that is keeping people from being homeless. And I don't want to characterize anything that we do as slimy, because I feel like we do good work. Good work in ensuring that not only are we helping folks in transition, but we also do good work in making sure we have a community where people can work and live and recreate and, and feel at home. But to the question at hand, I just feel like we're a strong partner in this. I don't want to push this off in a zoning designation, which by the way, I think if you were also poll and ask about vacancies and community desire in the business park, which was the overlay we picked, you'd probably get a worse response than you did from the churches. I have no doubt, as a matter of fact, of the desire for that. But what we're talking about here is, I think, is in the terms of, we have a very strict question, which is before us, which is about compliance to SB 2, which we're going to answer tonight and we will. Zone and be compliant with SB 2. But on the larger issues is for this council, this city, you know, this, the residents to contemplate the issues of chronic homelessness and how to address that. That's not the question we're answering tonight. I think we're answering that I have to be compliant to SB 2. I support the staff recommendation. I support that we have a place at the table in these conversations. And I will say something that is very important and it's, it's part of zoning. We just went through a whole general plan process. If you've been paying attention to politics in San Clemente for five years, we have tortured ourselves in our general plan process. I can't remember, I think it was over 50 meetings? Yeah. And I was part of that general plan advisory committee before I was elected on council. What was interesting in that whole time is we're contemplating these larger issues is that never at any point with all of the ideas that were dark sky ordinances, tree ordinances, the question of chronic homelessness did not surface in the general plan deliberations. So I think this is a good start to a conversation, but I think it's a conversation that the city should be involved in. So with that, I do, I do support staff recommendation. I do feel like the properties we've chosen have the, meet the requirements we have before us and at the same time respecting how important, you know, the vitality of our business community, the integrity of our residential areas are, then I'd support staff recommendation and adopt what we have in mind of us.
I'm going to build off of what you said. First of all, we are a progressive city and that should not escape the decision process. There's a lot of people here tonight with big hearts and I really appreciate that, that you took your time to come out, because there's some people that clearly care about the disadvantaged, as do I think all of us at the end of the day. So it was good to hear that. I'm supportive of staff's recommendation, but I have two conversation points. One is this, in the category of being progressive. I would like, SB 2 is very clear about the fact that you can have multi-jurisdictional solutions. And so tonight we need to be compliant and we need to make a decision, but I will raise my hand to be part of a subcommittee to reach out to San Juan and Dana Point and see if we keep this conversation going. And one of the, to me, one of the benefits of our approach being similar to their approach is, is it kind of gives us common ground for discussion. But I, beyond what we decide tonight, I very much would like to go forward and speak to our sister cities, because one of the things, and Denise knows this, that I was frustrated about was, we are one of the last two or three cities in the county to get this piece of work done. The good news is we can see what some other options are that are out there in terms of best practices, but it also, there might have arguably been a missed opportunity to work on a multi-jurisdictional basis. So I would very much like to raise my hand and reach out to San Juan and Dana Point. The second thing I wanted to talk about with regards to staff's proposal here. First of all, we've agreed we're lowering it to 20 beds, right? So then I was listening to some of the speakers and the spirit of the churches is this notion of at-will. And the spirit of SB 2 means they can open their doors to homeless without having to make a phone call to the city or check in with the city, because they will be able to do that. And last time we talked about 10 being the top limit there, and I'm still fine with that, but we might want, might want to have an even hand and just make it 20 across the board for anyone that wants to reach out to the homeless, whether it's at-will or whether it's in the process of building a shelter. So I wanted to put that idea out there so that it's kind of even-handed. Understanding that churches basically have two options. They could build a shelter as some of the collaborative people were talking about, or in times of catastrophic, catastrophic housing needs or emergency housing needs or ill weather or there's a minority group that's new to the community and needs a place to stay, they can do it without having to check in with the city. So those are my two comments. One is this idea of multi-jurisdictional as phase two and two is having a discussion about beds.
Yeah, just to add, first of all, I don't necessarily agree. I like the 10 and 20 and that's what I would be in favor of keeping. I like our proposal. And one of the things I just want to throw out, because I don't think that anything we do tonight with SB 2 precludes anybody from coming forward a year from now, two years from now, or three years from now, if they find a site, something that we haven't seen in our analysis that makes sense and they come in with a proposal, I don't believe there's anything that says the city council at the time can't entertain that and can't move forward with something like that. So it's not like you're saying you can't have it. We're just saying, based on what we know today and the, the studies and analysis that we've done, this is the overlay zone.
Yeah, a couple of things. One, for I think the third time since I've been seated on council, I agree with Jim. So that's, that's an interesting point. I agree with the 10 and 20. And just to clarify, Amber, just to, we make it clear, it's on page 7B37, maximum number of beds, it's stated 35, I think we're all in agreement, so that should be, the number's 20. But yeah, Jim, I think you hit the nail right on the head with all your, your points there. So if there is a fantastic site that someone has, it's not precluding that. We're just looking at filling the requirement for SB 2 at this time, so.
Well, for the first time since I've been seated at city council, I'm going to agree with Mr. Everett on 10 and 20 beds. So, so, but, but I would like to, to speak about the survey that was taken. I, I think that any, any homeless advocate that approached some of these faith-based organizations with not a survey but a plan, which finds some of them receptive. I mean, a survey is one thing. Showing up and having a plan is a completely different thing. These faith-based organizations in town have showed tremendous capacity for compassion. We see it all the time. So present them with a plan and, and maybe something will happen instead of a, just a survey.
So at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
I just want to clarify that there is a document on the dais that was at each one of yours that shows clarification in the ordinance. And if you could please include that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. It just reflects the, all the language that was presented in the presentation today.
Okay.
There's a strikeout on there, so that will replace the page 7B.
Oh, I see.
Thank you.
I will go ahead and read in a motion.
Before you do that, if you're going to read this, also read in under D, it shall not exceed 20 beds.
This is an ordinance revision, but I don't think it's a staff recommendation revision. Is that correct, Amber?
It needs to be read into the record, right?
Does, does this revision need to be read in?
Does it need to be read in?
I think it'd be faster to read it in.
Okay.
Okay, I will read it in. Okay. We're contemplating on page 7B37, two changes. One is 17 dot 56 dot 102, emergency shelter overlay district established B as in boy, city-owned parcels, in commercial business park and industrial zoning districts and a minimum of 500 feet from residential properties. And under 17 dot 56 dot 103, item D as in David, maximum number of beds shall not exceed 20 within the ES overlay district.
Do we, we need to read the full staff recommendation, I would assume.
You did read the titles of the resolution and ordinance, but the others you can just approve staff, vote to approve staff recommendation.
Okay. And then the balance of staff, the balance of staff recommendation?
Oh, I was just reading that and saw that you had it in the record, but I thought you wanted to make the motion.
Oh, let's, so let's go ahead and make a motion. So we have a motion by Lori's, second? Second by Everett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0 for those two items being read into the ordinance. And now we have staff recommendation we're going to read and vote on. So that was just on the two additions to the ordinance. And I'll go ahead and read it in. I move that we adopt staff recommendation, which is permit emergency shelters as a use by right for churches with their maximum occupancy of 10 beds per church and establish emergency shelter overlay on public and civic center-owned properties minus school parcels and on city-owned properties in non-residential zones at least 500 feet from residential zone properties and support the proposed development operating standards. Two, approve an estimated city chronic homeless count of 70 persons established by local enforcement and city and county social service agencies. Three, adopt resolution 14 dot 34 entitled resolutions of the city council, a resolution of the city council of city San Clemente, California approving a negative declaration and approving amendments to the general plan to implement Senate Bill 2 SB 2, the Emergency Shelter Act GPA 14 dash 122. And last, number four, last is introduce ordinance number 14 dash 35 entitled ordinance of the city of San Clemente, California to amend the municipal code and implement Senate Bill 2 SB 2, the Emergency Shelter Act, City File Number ZA 14 dash 121.
And could we add point five, which is to enter into conversations with San Juan Capistrano and Dana Point as to future opportunities on a multi-jurisdictional basis?
Yes, we can. And that is my motion.
So that would be point five. Joanne, do you have it?
Yes. And I'd also just like to read into the record that the correct ordinance number is 1585. It's a mistake on the agenda.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion by Brown, second by Everett. All those in favor? Aye. All those oppose? Passes 5-0. Thank you, staff. Thank you, residents, for your opinion, showing up. Denise, thank you. Amber, thank you. Jim, thanks, and go do some online baking. Enjoy the day.
God, engineers. Oh, I'm sorry, God, engineers.
Amber, if you don't know how I think by now, do you think I think that way? Well, oh, that makes it better. That makes it, what are you, a little pipe?
Let's go ahead and move on.
Okay. Oral communications, part two. I don't have any cards. So that puts us ahead to city manager.
Oh, oh, okay. Let's see, I think we had one little slide that I was going to show here. Let's see, I think we had one little slide that I was going to show here. And once we're there, I'll...
Folks, if you're going to speak, can you step outside, please? Thank you. Actually, it's very exciting stuff, the new city website, so...
Yep, the new city website, going to be introduced on, open up on August the 25th. We're going to have a special presentation also on September the 2nd of the city council to introduce the new website. We're pretty excited by it, so I thought I'd bring that up. Second thing I wanted to hand out, if we could pass these along, our council's aware that we've been doing sort of a new branding concept, and so we have some brand-new pens that were designed by my executive assistant, and yeah, but they're pretty nice, sir. No. For the future. We could probably do that. We can probably do that. Pretty nice, huh? Very nice. Very nice. They're very nice. Inexpensive, but very nice quality.
Yeah, no, I like the quality. It's excellent.
So thank you.
These Mont Blancs, you know, bays, is that what these are? Yeah.
No, I don't think we're required to, but since we are a city of, we didn't want to put corporation of San Clemente, so... Oh, yeah, actually, if you look at the other side, too, the SC kind of is the branding also.
We are official.
Veronica did all the work.
This was part of the signage, right? When we developed the signage?
Yeah, actually, we kind of took off on the signage, the wayfinding signs, and utilized that concept, and that's going to go carry on into the website, et cetera, et cetera. Jim Everett needs to get home.
Jim's getting just as short as Paul is right now, because they're both leaving in the next couple of months here.
One foot out the door.
And city attorney?
Your report.
Council members?
Just one quick item, it's kind of a follow-up on what we were just discussing. Seeing Joe back there kind of reminded me.
Hey, Joe, you still have a mustache, bro.
Dirty. Forty-eight more hours.
I bet your wife is counting.
One of the things that I'd asked the city manager and the sheriff probably a month and a half ago, and so I think it's in process, and I heard a gentleman talk about safety and concerns about the homeless that we do have in terms of mental problems and other problems, is I'd asked for the sheriff's department to come forward to, before the council, and give a report, an update on the size of the homeless population, what kind of crime, because every now and then, if you read the register where you see the different crime reports, you'll see a homeless man involved, so that we can get more of a handle on how big the problem is in terms of, as it relates to safety and... So that's something that we should be expecting, and I think I just want to...
Actually, I think it's coming on September the 2nd, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right? Yeah, September 2nd, under special presentation. That's sort of a multi-departmental effort that we've been, have been led by Joe and some others.
And I'm clearly not a lame duck, contrary to popular belief.
I just said you're ready to leave. I didn't say anything about lame duck. Something I want to agendize, after reading Paul's fabulous city manager report, I realized that one of the new parks that's coming online in Marblehead is named Sunset Park. And we have a park right on the border of our community north end of town that's actually in Dana Point, that sits on our border named Sunset Park. So I'd like to agendize having staff relook at the names. There's a list of names, and this one came out, you know, wherever it did on the list, there's one right below that we can choose as well. So the names have already been vetted. I'd like to take a look, looking at a different name, so we don't have two parks closer within our community that have the same name.
That might suggest that you refer that to the Beaches Parks and Rec Commission for them to look at it, because they're the ones that came up with the original names, so they have a whole list of names, so that's what I would...
I have a PowerPoint that I believe Veronica put together for me, she was very kind. Apparently involves me jumping off the pier.
We have time.
Yeah. This was a fascinating thing, because, you know, we went out there with all these junior lifeguards who were doing push-ups, you know, respect the pier push-ups, you know, they do 10 push-ups before they go on there, no splinters, kind of a cool little tradition. I get out there, these little steel-hearted children were ready to go, they're all raring to go, and, you know, not that I had second doubt, you know, any doubts or anything like that, but I'm like, man, somebody should be cautious here. So, anyway, so there I am in the back, there is a less cautious soul who looks like he's about to belly flop. You know, they straightened out pretty good towards the end. And then you got, now, if you notice over on the inside, there's all the parents. So there was an audience, there was a little bit of, you know, there's a little, I wouldn't say peer pressure, but there was peer pressure. And so they're jumping off, and then they would, oh, hey now, look at that! That's very, not a good picture. So, but, no, I did, between I got off here, I started crying, and I went and got a hot dog at the stand bar.
Wait, that was a question, are you crying now?
Yeah, no, I'm weeping.
Oh, weeping.
And I went and got a hot dog and hung out for a couple hours until they talked me off. No, I jumped and I survived. And so, now, they did say, I was going to do a backflip. I was going to, I wanted to do a flip, but they said, do the pencil dive, the pencil dive, right, which is, you know, like this. And so, you know, come on, what kind of example would it be if I'm doing backflips with the kids are doing pencil dives? So, no, I should have done a cannonball. Now that I think about it, that would have been a lot better. So I jumped off, I survived. It was great, because we had an hour that we're out there, and it was like, it was almost like being one of those folks who are talking jumpers down, you know, you're like, hey, it's going to be fine, you know, because there are a few kids a little bit, you know, cautious, but it was great. And I sure appreciate it. We have a great junior lifeguards program. If there's anybody out there listening, really recommend it. We're convincing my girls into it, and they just, you, one of the things I really appreciate is how you learn to respect the ocean. I'd like to thank Dennis from the lifeguards, who was my host out there, and all of the lifeguards who did such a great job. We are very fortunate to have them serving us.
Hey, Tim, just to add to that, first of all, it was, when I was mayor, I got the thought of jumping off, because when I listened to these kids come up at the presentation, junior lifeguards, a lot of them were saying that the highlight of their camp was jumping off the pier. So I said, if they can jump off, the mayor should.
I think the low light of their camp was watching the mayor jump off.
But I think the fact that you did it with them was what I would prefer to do, I think is great, and I think that should be a standard for every mayor that follows you.
Tell you, the backflip would have been a nice touch, but, you know, that would have been, you know, breaking the law, and then I would have had Joe Bull arrest me when I got to the beach, and that would have been not good. Actually, I'm sorry, his mustache would have arrested me, I think.
The, I don't know whether you wrote about it in the paper, I don't know if it made the paper yet, but the toll road is going to refinance now, we're going to refinance the 73. We're, now we're going to pay it off in 2050 instead of 2040.
Before you leave that topic, Bob, do you have the date when it was originally supposed to go public? Because that's the new renegotiation date, so what was the original public date?
You know, I asked a lot of questions of the CEO. I haven't received a response yet, but that was one of my questions. But early 30s is what I recall. How old are you going to be in 2050, Amber?
Am I going to be here in 2050?
How old are you going to be in 2050?
Your age, Bob.
Bingo. Forty-two.
Okay, I have two things, and first of all, colleagues, I also jumped off the pier. So, yeah, very good. And they even, I did a double axle triple with sequins and, you know...
That's what I get for obeying the law.
And they had cameras down at the bottom, so you can see the G-forces. So you're very brave to show your pictures, mayor. I have two items. One is, I want to encourage the public to make every opportunity for this Thursday night to come to the Ole Hansen Room at the community center to talk about the local coastal plan, which is a key component of our new general plan. And Jim Petches has been working on this for almost as long as the toll road has been a twinkle in someone's eyes. It's 6:00 PM, Ole Hansen Room, Community Center, local coastal plan, and for a beach city, it's a real big deal. The other thing is, I also have a slide. The CERT, Community Emergency Response Team, is now open for interested people who would like to be trained. Residents and members of the business community will learn basic skills to save lives and protect property in the aftermath of a major disaster. This includes training in basic disaster skills such as preparedness, fire safety, disaster medical operations, search and rescue, and terrorism awareness. The class meets six consecutive Thursdays from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, beginning September 4th, and it finishes with a very cool course review and disaster simulation on October 11th. To date, this is pretty good. From our city, 162 residents have graduated from the program, and if you want to participate, you have to go to all the classes, and you can see on the screen that Katie Carpenter is your contact at 361-6109, or you can go to cert@san-dash-clemente.org. And registration is limited, so if you're even thinking about doing it, get on your computer right now or put a phone call into Katie. And I'd also like to say that on the national night out, I think the mayor was there, too, we saw some of our CERT graduates, and the training is really top-notch, so I'd encourage the community, if you have the time, it's a really important program.
I'm sorry, I got one more thing. I will be bringing a report back to the next city council meeting. I'm going to a meeting on Thursday with Mrs. Nancy Sutherland, is hosting a meeting for some local folks who have started up their own adult living communities, I guess you would call it, senior communities. Brian Williams did a big piece on this on the news about six months ago, and our human affairs committee has invited some people that know how to do this, to get seniors involved and helping other seniors. And anyway, I'll be bringing your report back at the next city council meeting about it. I'm very excited about it. It helps folks who get to be a little older stay in their homes instead of having to go to care facilities. Very exciting program.
Anything else? Chris, do I have? Yep. With that, I move that we adjourn to the next...